Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Tonight, we are starting our City Council meeting with a workshop first. This is a continuation of some of our zoning and ordinance updates and changes with the Planning Department, and we do have City Planner Prescott with us this evening.
Thank you for having me this evening to continue our conversation about land use workshops. Tonight, we're going to go ahead and talk about zoning ordinance amendments. I just want to make it really clear before we dive too far into this that we are in no way trying to overwrite or revise the good work of the ZOR Committee. We are actually trying to follow up on a list of subsequent amendments that were left from that process as well as other items that staff and counselors have pointed out since that work has been done. A full zoning ordinance rewrite like we did a few years ago will generally lead to revisions and changes after the fact as you see the impacts of what was written in the field. So that's really what we're after. We're not here to change a bunch of things and rewrite what the ZOR folks did. So I'm just going to, from a very high level, look at the following topics with you all and explain the list that we have. Some of this, again, was from subsequent amendments. Some of it are items that have come forward during our discussion. So those items really have, are lumped into several categories, including parking, landscaping, design standards. Design standards is where we see the urban green space, which I know we owe this council an analysis on. Some work on Route 1, as well as updates to historic preservation overlay district standards, looking at how we define neighborhood, which I know was on the list as well. Housing topics in general are some LD 2003 follow-up considerations. We told you we would report back after a year of implementation. Your LD 2003 revisions became effective in October 26, 2023, so we are coming up to that one-year timeline. Universal design standards for elderly and disability housing, especially when somebody taps into our elder density bonus, would be really important and, I think, beneficial for the city. And then we've already spoken about the conservation cluster subdivision, but we just didn't want it to not be on this list for you. As far as parking amendments, we do have some comprehensive plan goals. Again, we look back to our comprehensive plan tie-in that calls for several goals and objectives for implementation strategies that look at not only the downtown parking study, but ways to reduce impervious pavement areas, looking at existing parking immobility and how they can support housing, and then other community goals. I'm not going to sit here and read each one. I know you have other business tonight, so we'll move on, but it will be here for you. And again, we'll make sure that City Administration gets a copy of this so it can go up on your more section of your agenda. So what we're working on is a implementation of putting forward the parking study recommendations as well as some other updates to help with impervious surface coverage and reduction overall impervious surface. One thing that I find is difficult for developers or that they don't understand is the green space held in reserve could really be used much better than it is today. Green space held in reserve allows a developer to permit a future parking expansion but never actually build it until it's needed to meet parking. It's been used in a few places throughout the city and during those time periods before the developers built the parking, A, they haven't always needed the parking, and B, it's allowed for lawn space or trees to remain until that area is needed. I think we could do some things to highlight that as a useful provision for Saco. Landscaping amendments, we've already begun the process of working on this. I know you heard about this with the Conservation Commission joint meeting. Some comprehensive plan goals, our tie-ins are here. Our subdivision site plan review ordinance requirements, looking at natural resources, protection of natural resources, and designing and locating open space for multiple purposes, including climate efforts and reduction of heat island effect overall. What we're looking at here is working with the Conservation Commission. We've already started a draft of this on native planting requirements as well as additional tree protection requirements to follow up on our tree ordinance revision that we put in place in the spring. Design standard amendments. This is where some of those other items come into play regarding the comprehensive plan goals. We're looking at the Historic District Design Guidelines. It's been on the city's radar to update those design guidelines for some time and then also continue implementation of complete streets recommendations. Some ongoing objectives that will inform those ordinance amendments will be continued work on our Route 1 master plan to understand really what the community wants for the Route 1 corridor specifically. We'll look more thoroughly at the neighborhood definition and how it's reviewed. We'll also do the urban green space analysis for Historic Preservation Commission. We'll look at items that have already been ongoing, including solar panels, murals, replacement windows, and composite materials. And for Regional Planning Project, we do have a Reimagine Route 1 grant that we'll be participating in over the next few years. For housing amendments, we did a list of housing amendments last year. We'll come back to you with the LD 2003 implications and ideas that we have for strengthening some of our ordinance standards there. Again, comprehensive plan goal tie-ins are up here. Future projects and ongoing are including universal design standards. We're working with Jean Saunders and the Age Friendly Group to bring forward a Universal Design Guidelines booklet, similar to our ADU booklet, and we'll be bringing forward redlined revisions to you for your review for universal design standards for the elder housing density bonus provision. For updates and considerations of LD 2003, I do have a couple of recommendations that were made to us by the State Housing Office that they've asked us to review. I'll be bringing those forward as well as some other considerations by staff to strengthen maintenance agreement requirements and how shared services and utilities on lots work. For conservation cluster subdivision, we previously discussed that with councils, so we don't have to re-review that today. And then we have a Housing Action Plan that will inform future ordinance amendments and future policy recommendations. Our RFP closed today. I'm happy to say we received four bids, so that's pretty, that's pretty good. We'll be reviewing those and looking to select a consultant so we can move forward on that plan as well. At this time, I'd like to thank the planning team for putting this together. A lot of work by Shannon Chizum, our Assistant City Planner, to get this in the formatting for you all and to work with other staff to put together a list. I know we have other items on our land use workshop list, such as school impact fees, et cetera, but I want to make sure that we kind of package this together for you and see if there was anything else you wanted us to address under these specific categories. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Emily. Anyone with any questions, comments, discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. First of all, for the council and the public, I wanted to make a general comment about the current evolution and iteration of the Planning Board. I've been the Planning Board liaison since January and had been a frequent visitor of Planning Board meetings for the prior three years or so. And I think it's important, I've always viewed the Planning Board as the second most important decision-maker here in the city because it really does help guide the future of our community. And I just want to go on record with a compliment that having seen the Planning Board in action for many years, and with all due respect to prior boards, every board has a different chemistry. There's different leadership that's been part of the mix over that period of time. But I have actually been pleased to see the professionalism and the evolution of competency, if you will, in terms of knowing their roles. The Planning Board as it exists today is comprised of some very dedicated members. They come prepared, they work hard, they ask a lot of questions. They, I've seen on several occasions, are challenging, you know, aspects of plans with developers. And so I think it's important for all of us to realize that there is that, that level of improvement that's occurred. And I also want to commend our planner, Director Prescott. She, she has just really, I think, been sort of the glue her and her staff pulling all this, this together and keeping it at a very high, high level, so kudos. I appreciate all the, I'm hearing things I really like to hear, so that's great. I like all the topics here that you brought before us. I did, I don't know if you have received it yet, but I did, I did submit a list of what I would call more granular comments about the existing zoning ordinance. And I think back to your original point where I think the ZORS Committee did a commendable job of bringing forth a new zoning ordinance. As we apply that, we find perhaps little cracks here or there that we maybe didn't realize. And because we've had an opportunity to have, you know, multiple plans come before us that test these cracks, that it's important to identify those and do what we can in the short run while, while all of this high-level evolution is occurring to, to plug those cracks. So, so I just want to get this out into the public and we can make these comments available to anybody who's interested. But I did come up with, I've been accumulating stuff for years, about four pages of comments. And I recognize that, because I'm seeing it on Tuesday nights, that the staff is really busy, got a lot of stuff on your plate, and you're trying to manage that workload as best you can. So I have actually identified the five top priorities as I would, I would classify them in hopes that we might be able to resolve these issues, at least in this calendar year. And for the benefit of the public, the areas that I have highlighted have to do, and one of them was, was mentioned here, has to do with neighborhood definitions. So I've offered up three new terms to be added to the definition section of our zoning ordinance, Chapter 230, and also an addendum to one of the existing definitions as well. And I would like to get that, you know, in the record and then debate it at some point with the council as we move forward to make policy decisions. I've also, second on my, my list of five is improvements to the financial and technical capacity standards, which is Section 602 of Article 6. We, I've observed some, some challenges with that process. I am a banker by trade, a commercial lender by trade, and a commercial real estate lender by trade. And I think that the basic text that we expect to see in those letters can be improved significantly without the burden of asking an institution to give us a, a formal commitment. So, so I've, I've inserted some, some language in my proposal here for you to consider. The, the third area is, is one that you have, and you know, listen, that's the neighborhood. I've seen some struggles trying to define what neighborhood is, particularly when we have to do with neighborhood comparability. And so I have offered up some suggestions as to how we might be able to address that, including a, a format for information that I think could be particularly useful to the Planning Board and make that whole aspect of their, of their review that much easier. And then lastly, I, I have asked us to consider a slight change to the dimensional standards relative to multifamily dwellings as a conditional use. I, I think we've seen, at least in one case, a fairly substantial concentration of eight-unit buildings in a, in a very tight area. And I know that I, I myself am supportive of introducing up to eight-unit buildings into our, into our city as, as part of our quest to create more housing. But I think we need to be a little bit cautious about that and how we allow that to happen. And I have proposed, in my notes, a, a consideration to, to adjust the, the front, I'm sorry, the side and rear setback requirements to help limit to some extent how many can be placed in a certain location, which I think, one, helps us preserve green space and, second of all, gives the, the folks who are living these, these facilities a little bit more green space to, to enjoy life, if you will. So I know those are, they're very granular. And, and I would really appreciate the opportunity to get those before council and give us an opportunity to, to vet them and then make some decisions as to, as to what, what we want to do moving forward, if that is at all possible. And thank you for your hard work. You do a good job.
Great. Anyone else? Remember, it is a workshop, so you are free to speak. You do not need to be called on. Emily, did you have any questions or comments? Back to Counselor Hatch.
I think what we should do is probably package this up and bring it to our long-range planning committee and our Planning Board to get their feedback. There were some good ideas that Counselor Hatch brought forward, and I think that maybe working with all the different teams could make them as strong as possible.
I agree.
Had you received the packet yet? It was sent to City Administrator Mahenko.
I'll make sure that I have it.
Okay, great. If no one else has any comments? I guess we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. And if I could just note that we did have a joint Planning Board workshop on the schedule. We will be scheduling that for some time in October, early November. We haven't lost sight of it. It's just not going to occur on the date it was listed originally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'd now like to call the regular Saco City Council meeting for September 23, 2024, to order at 6:47 PM. Make note that we have all members of council present this evening, including Deputy City Administrator Pat Fox with us this evening. And would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. That now takes us to item number five this evening, and that is the Committee Correspondence to Council. Any councilor members wishing to speak? Okay, not seeking, seeing anyone seeking recognition. Item number six, there is no general this evening. And item number seven is public comment. We do have three people signed up at this time. First up, we do have Jody and Todd Picard. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address council.
Jody Picard?
Todd Picard, by Crystal Lane.
Just wanted to mention our concern about--
Speak right into the microphone, please. Oh, thank you.
Just wanted to mention our concern about the upcoming solar project and more about the water situation on--
A little bit more, if you could maybe pull it forward to you or lean forward. Thank you. There we go.
The water situation on Berry Road and Crystal Lane that has affected a number of neighbors, including damaged vehicles, flooded basements, and allowing, you know, certain neighbors to allow this to happen and the city not stepping in. I just feel that that's tragic. And it's, you know, tragic to us who pay taxes, you know, to the city of Saco but don't have any backing by anybody in the city of Saco to handle the situation. Thank you.
Our main concern is, you know, them wanting to run a ditch for the Berry Road when they improve it behind our house. I mean, we know there's ledge back there. We've got three wells back there. And if it does happen, I'd like to see it piped because, you know, how often the city cleans their ditches, especially one that's not along a main road. And I don't see why the water can't go where it's been going for 100 years. You know, the city not doing anything to the neighbor that has it blocked. And along with him destroying wetlands across the street anyways, that's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the list, we have Steve Campbell. Again, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Campbell. I live at 116 Berry Road, the very last house on the road. I'm here to talk about the continuing issues that have been going on in our private end of Berry Road. of Berry Road. We've been dealing with flooding and severe road deterioration due to the city's decisions. I've lived in that house for a little over six years now, and over the past year and a half, flooding has been getting worse. Decisions that the city has made on our private road has caused these problems, and there hasn't, the city has offered no solutions or any help at all. This combined with the blocking of a culvert has caused some real safety and flooding concerns. I've asked the city on multiple occasions to resolve the blocked culvert issue with no help. I just get, I keep getting told that it's a private road and there's nothing the city can do to help. But the city has no problem raising our taxes this year and charging us the full amount, even though we do not receive full services or help like the rest of the city. We don't have school bus services to the end of our road. We don't have plowing or maintenance. The only reason we have trash pickup is due to the kind services provided by Jamie Blow. We continue to receive mixed information from the city about the start of the private road. Come to find out, the city had a survey done from plans that were dated from the late 1800s, and the start of the private road is almost a quarter mile off from where they originally said it was. We have come together as a neighborhood to try to work with the city to get this private side of the road turned over to the city. We are tired of receiving non-answered responses with no real answer and being led in circles. With Tom Donnelly and HEP coming into the picture, this is a perfect time to finally get some results. His offer to finish the road and resolve the rainwater issue and have the city take over is a perfect time to finally have some results and put this all behind us. This is a no-brainer to me, but for some reason, there's still pushback from city council members. I moved to Saco because of the great reputation and school department that the city has. Since moving here, I feel the reputation of this city is not what it was advertised. I have two small children that are two and four years old, and this road upgrade would very, be very beneficial for me and my family. I'm willing to sign any easements that are required to get this road back to its previous state, and I strongly feel the city should also be standing behind HEP and the residents of Berry Road and improve the MOU.
Thank you, Steve. Next up, we have Ed Hamilton.
My name is Ed Hamilton. I reside on 97 Berry Road, which is about 4,700 feet from the beginning of the road. And as you've heard tonight, there are drainage issues, severe drainage issues, on the private side of the Berry Road that has caused heartache on the, with the residents, specifically getting children to school. Also, potentially issues with emergency services getting access to the homes on the latter part of the Berry Road because we do not get city plowing and other services. Now, with HEP coming into the picture, they're proposing to help remediate and bring to standard some of these issues. And I am behind HEP and their mission to correct and remediate these things. Now, you may be just a dead-end road in Saco, however, there's going to be a 20-megawatt solar park constructed, which I think is unique. So I ask the council here to consider HEP's resolution to these issues and also help the neighbors and folks on Berry Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. That's all we have signed up. If there is anyone from the members of the public wishing to speak, please step up. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item eight, and that is the consent items, and that is the approval of the minutes. We have the council minutes for 9/9/24 and the council minutes for 9/16/24. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second? Second by Councilor, that, Gun or Councilor Archer? Who got first? Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Okay, we'll call a vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Abstained.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. Okay, that now takes us to item nine, and that is the action items this evening. First one we have is item A, which is one reading of the Berry Road Moratorium, the MOU, and that is Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thomas Donnelly, Vice President of Development of ATP Energy USA Holdings, has been meeting with property owners along Berry Road to revive and update, or revive an updated version of the 2021 Berry Road Memorandum of Understanding. The updated proposal is to improve approximately 1,337 linear feet of roadway with a turnabout at the end of the street to resolve the unaccepted portion of the Berry Road. The MOU attached to this item commentary has been reviewed by City Attorney Murphy. Thomas Donnelly has asked for the opportunity to speak with the city council directly at this meeting. I move to approve the Berry Road Memorandum of Understanding and further move to authorize the city administrator to enter into the agreement.
Motion has been made by Councilor Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Any discussion or comments on the item? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Could we ask Mr. Donnelly to come forward, please?
Certainly, we do have him in attendance.
Good evening.
Good evening, members. Councilor Hatch?
Yes, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to address the concerns that were made during the public hearing and validate your intentions to work to remediate the flooding issues that were highlighted for us. Could you, could you just help me understand that and the rest of the council?
Absolutely. I'll start with the most recent part. Council Johnson brought up many valid points at the last two meetings ago. The critical one being the width of the road at 49.5 feet and not being 50 feet when the finished road was completed. 49.5 feet is, in fact, three rods wide. A rod was a measurement of 16 and a half feet. John Berry, who was the farmer at the time, gave the original easement. I do recall it's Book One, Page Two of the Cumberland, of the York County Registry deed, so if you go back that far, it's there. We were terribly, what Council Johnson brought up was valid, but what we couldn't figure out was how could we do this without involving mortgage companies? To go back straight onto the 50-foot mark, we were, the original instrument was a quid claim deed, which would have meant that we had to go back and tell the mortgage people that you are surrendering these six inches of additional land. In my research of other properties, lo and behold, your city attorney, Tim Murphy, had a very eloquent answer in 2009, and he had a perpetual easement, which he did for the placement of utility poles on the, for Gene Hall's section of Berry Road, which is actually done by Mr. Campbell's property. When we read through it, we, I brought it to the city planner, and Emily kindly got, said, yes, we would accept that. As we were giving an easement, perpetual easement now says, a landowner is offering the generosity of that six inches regardless of the sale of the property in the future that will always remain. That allowed us to get to the 50-foot mark. That to us was critical, you know, to, as you could well imagine, going to, you may have a mortgage with Bitterford Savings Bank, but it could be with somebody in Nevada, California, it could take a year to chase it. So this was a very eloquent option which came on the table. The second thing we did is that now we had the stormwater issues. The drain issues are quite considerable, and if you go to Bentley Drive, and if you were to stand there, you would look both west and east, and you see the road goes off in both directions. You have no drainage right now. You, some driveways have culverts, some don't. The answers proposed by Linda Valentino in her development in 2021 was actually a very white glove approach. I mean, it was a tremendous approach, which was, we're willing to incorporate and do. Unfortunately, when the reality of finances hit at that time, they realized they couldn't do all of Berry Road and could only get down to Bentley Drive. And that's when the people who were living there said, well, what about everybody else? How can we solve it? So that's why that project did not move. We've accepted all the engineering. It's a very good drainage plan. Linda Valentino's providing an 1,100-foot easement that will go all the way down to the ponds down on Boom Road, which will pick up the water which goes into the sod farm reservoirs. And that's how that will be navigated and treated, and therefore, any overflow from there goes to the river as it does typically. So now we can contain and manage water right along from the edge of Crystal Lane all the way down to the end. You've got three different significant waterways in three different directions there, and right now, Berry Road has got no drainage scheme and areas has become the lowest point. Coupled with that, there's been some activity done by individuals which has hampered the existing waterways, and that has to be resolved as well. Now, that's, those conversations are apart from me. I essentially will become a catalyst that will go in and start the work, do it as planned. We have full topography on the area done from the solar project, so this now allows us to move forward and bring it moving.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Council Johnson?
Comments, but, so again, at the last meeting, as was indicated, you know, I raised concerns with several of the ordinances. I spoke with the applicant, I would say, at length following that meeting, and I felt that you understood my position, I understood yours, and I left that conversation feeling though we probably could, you know, come to an agreement here. You know, as I said before, the standards are the standards, and I just think it's important that we recognize what those standards are. And so you have Chapter 186 dash 34, streets less than 50 feet wide. That was a concern. It's being addressed to meet, again, my original major concern, which was that it didn't meet that standard. 186 dot 37, construction standards, acceptance of city infrastructure. Again, it's pretty much highlighting we don't accept streets of 50-foot less width. Improvements in old subdivisions, same thing, but it's saying that from a certain date back, we don't accept roads that are in old subdivisions. Now, one perhaps could argue whether or not that was a subdivision. I don't know. It's not for me to determine, but that was my thinking. You had the technical design manual, same thing, you know, right? So we're just, it was verbatim, that was pretty clear that the city doesn't accept roads with less than 50 feet. And then, of course, the other subject that kind of remains at large is the overall length, and that falls into Chapter 188, 7, 10, street design, and that, again, is with dead-end streets. You also have Chapter 230 with, again, private, the length of private or public roads. So I think that, as the applicant's kind of indicated, it's gone to pretty great lengths to at least meet me halfway. And I recognize, I was going to say it goes back to the mid-1800s, but perhaps the road might go even further back. So it's a unique situation, one that has predated my time here. It goes back probably, you know, at least to the 1970s that I'm aware of. So I certainly understand where, you know, people living out there want something finalized, fixed. I get that, I will say. While I understand people are passionate about it, the Berry Road really isn't any different than any other private street we have in the city when it comes to services. So I get that concern, but there are other people that don't have those same city services. But the unique nature of this, that, you know, I wrestled with this and tried to come to terms with it, because that distance is significant. And I've always said, how do I, you know, move forward not accepting other roads that have similar situations or could? But given that there's a potential future win-win here with this being a public road ending or terminating at a private road, there's potential in the future at some point that we could actually connect Boom Road to Route 5, which I'm not saying anytime soon, but that would give us that ability, just looking at the overall maps. So for me, I think that, you know, it kind of gave me reason to see why, you know, this may make sense. And then the other component of this that I had, I struggled with was the language in that document where I felt it was rather strong in the sense that we were binding or bounding a future council based off this decision today, but that's been addressed simply by adding the sunset date of two years, because for the most part, everybody here, maybe not everybody, but the majority of council should be seated here when we accept this road, if we meet the two-year window. So that, again, gave relief to that concern. So as proposed, I'm supportive of it. Like I said, it's not perfect, but obviously, there's a lot of work that was done, and I actually, you know, I thank the applicant for having that conversation with me. I thought it was fulfilling. I wish, wish more often that would occur, just from my perspective, because I thought we had a good conversation. We came to terms, and you, probably the very next day, went about trying to figure this out. So I appreciate that. I'm glad I was heard, and I heard you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you. Council Berman?
Yeah, just, just very brief. To me, this seems like a clear win-win. This is my second time seeing the private section of Berry Road in front of council. We didn't come to a conclusion from that first reading. We've heard from residents tonight about some of the ongoing issues there. We have a solution in front of us that would remediate many of those issues. In addition, it provides a needed second access point to the solar project, which is essential for public safety. The concerns of council were met, so I think this is a great example of a win-win, and I'm clearly supportive.
Thank you.
If I may--
Council Johnson?
I will just add, because I forgot, the issue of the length of road, I just, I want to recognize that while it overall is in the purview of council, given that it's an ordinance, it really lies with the planning board to make that determination if they're going to give it a waiver or not. And so I'm comfortable with that. I'm not going to, again, advocate one way or the other, but it really is up to them based on the subdivision ordinance. So that's where it will go.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Council Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I'm sorry, I had one other point of clarification that I forgot to ask you about, and that has to do with the end of the road, the, whether it's a hammerhead or whatever, but the design of that, I understand, is sufficient to handle a school bus. Is that correct?
Absolutely. The, we, I am unsure if you got this recent drawing we had done, just done by your survey, and the abandoned Foss Road easement markers are still there. So that's actually 60 feet wide. We will have sufficient space there. Absolutely. Now, we haven't figured out a design. We don't know we're going to do it. We may have to encroach on some of Andrea Carron's and Steve Campbell's property. They've both said, yeah, absolutely, wherever you need to make this turnaround happen. I don't know for what it will be or how it will be at the end. I just, on the, if I may, I may have just had to point to Council Johnson's comments. As far as I know, I'm, from my research, I'm the fourth person in 28 years to come in front of council with this solution. We have a findings of fact that we go through with the planning board, and then they, at the end of it, we are, our current findings of fact base us to remove the road through the array at the end of its natural life of the project. We're happy to have that amended out to say, subject to council approval, to remove it or leave it, because that will get you within 1,500 feet of New County Road.
Right.
Council Johnson?
Right, and you and I had, somewhat had that conversation, but, I mean, I guess I would advocate for that, and I can do that on my own, but, yeah, to me, it is that opportunity. You know, you indicated that used to be Foss Road there, it's kind of laid out as such. If we can, you know, we're talking, what, 30 years from now?
Yeah, beyond--
I'll be an old man, but--
But either way--
At least we can lay that groundwork in 2024 for a potential road.
Yeah. I mean, you will have a, and for all we know, the width of the road may be out of code 25, 30 years from now. Today, it's in code. It's a 50-foot easement. It's got a full 20-foot road built to be able to take whatever vehicle you want, but maybe, just an option that we can leave it on the side.
Thank you.
You know?
Great, thank you, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions? Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, that now takes us to item ten, and that's new business this evening. We do have Public Works Deputy Director Travis Moore with us on the tri-county camera inspection agreement, if you want to give a quick overview.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So this is longstanding agreement that we've had with Bitterford and Old Orchard, where we share a underground utility inspection truck. It's a fairly technical and expensive piece of equipment, so going in the agreement with the other communities allows us to split those costs and makes it, you know, reasonable for each community. We share a city of Saco employee, it's broken down by forty percent Saco, forty percent Bitterford, twenty percent Old Orchard, that time and all expenses are broken down by that, that breakdown. We've been in this agreement since 2006, and this is looking for a three-year extension.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Travis on this? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I'm just curious if the agreement's been in place since 2006, has there been any difficulty with the agreement between the parties over that timeframe?
No, no, we have a capital budget that we purchase, you know, larger purchases out of, and we meet together at least once a year, sometimes more than once a year if we have any items we need to discuss or larger purchases, that we're looking for approval.
Good example of a mutual benefit amongst communities, so.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this is a new business item, this will be on a future agenda. Is there a counselor who would like to take this? Counselor Gunn? Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, that now takes us to item eleven, and that is administrative update. Deputy Director Fox?
I do have some items.
Deputy CA Fox, sorry.
So we do have a couple requests for proposals that are on the city website under bids and bids and solicitation. Fire Department, 2025 Chevy Tahoe, that bid will be accepted until 1:30 on Wednesday, October 2nd. And then we have an RFP for the capital financing of some other vehicles that have already been publicly bid, so the bid for a qualified leasing institution for two Ford F-150 pickup trucks and two Chevy Trailblazers, that bid will be accepted until 1:00 PM on Friday, October 4th. So people can go to the website under bids for additional information. This coming Thursday, September 26th, between 11:30 AM and 1:30 PM, is the annual City Employee Staff Appreciation Day. It's a great day for all of the employees across all departments to get together. City Hall will be closed during that time, this is the only time of the year that all city employees come together for one event, so it will just be closed from 11:30 to 1:30, and we appreciate some public support for employees and taking those couple hours to wait on your city business here at City Hall. At last meeting, the Elm Street Bridge discussion came up during, during council conversation, just, so with the recent lowering of water levels in the Saco River by Brookfield for dam maintenance work, concerns have been expressed regarding the appearance of the Elm Street Bridge. So thank you for bringing that to staff's attention, so we did take some action on that, and we were able to, Main Department of Transportation was very responsive, their bridge engineer stated that there was actually a rehabilitation project of that bridge in 1995, and they actually cored piles through the old concrete down into ledge. So the concrete that you see that does look alarming from Counselor Johnston's pictures is actually at this point sacrificial, so it's not the structural, the main structural component. I never would have known that, so thank you for pointing that out. They were able to provide design drawings of what occurred, so despite the look of that concrete now, city staff is aware that there is a lot more holding that bridge than what you see. We were also able to collect, thank you to the Communications Department, they jumped right on collecting drone footage from Route One up through Diamond Riverside Park and out to the railroad crossing. So it did give us at least another view of some of the low-lying areas, some of the areas that are but city infrastructure, and some of the outfalls that we have for storm drain and stuff like that, so. Couldn't really do the river beyond that, because you need line of sight with the drone, and there weren't a lot of public access points, so we didn't get the whole river, but it was a great opportunity to grab a small, small area there. And while I have the microphone, since this is my last public appearance in Saco at a meeting as a city staff member, I just want to thank all of the current and past councils, mayors, boards, and commission members for all that you do and volunteering your time. It's one thing to be a staff member, it's another thing to volunteer all of that time of your own. Thank you to residents and business owners over the last twenty years who allowed me to learn on the job and figure things out as I went. Sometimes it took a few tries, but I think we, we always looked to service, service each individual as best we could. And then, and a special and amazing, thanks to the amazing staff across all departments that our goal is truly to make it so residents and business owners take for granted what we do every day. So, and I think you've got an amazing staff here that is going to carry that on for many years to come. So the last twenty years have been the most rewarding years of my life professionally and personally, so I knew I'd get a little emotional during this, but that's just, that's what you get. So just thank you to everyone, and I appreciate this opportunity that this is actually the role I'm filling for the last meeting that I'll be at, so, thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I was going to do this during council discussion, but I wanted to send my sincere thanks, congratulations and best wishes. You were actually one of the first department heads that reached out to me when I came on council in 2019. First one I was able to sit down with, you gave me a whole revamp of everything that was going on in the city, and since then, in the last five years, you've always have been a good, great source of resource, resource for me, and just have always been so helpful, and I just am going to miss you and want to wish the best of luck. Okay, that now takes us to item twelve, and that is council discussion and comment. Any councils wishing to speak? Counselor Johnston, then Counselor Hatch?
Thank you. Yeah, along those same lines, and it's all right to get emotional, it shows you care, which is one of the things I will certainly say about my experience with Director Fox, is he's always cared regardless of the topic. He's a hundred percent on everything, I appreciate how a matter of fact and just fact-based driven you are, it's refreshing. I mean, it's a decade-plus myself working with you, it's been a joy, and I won't say goodbye, I hope to cross paths, maybe even back here in Saco in the future, so congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail, I'm going to jump on the Pat Fox love fest.
We don't all need to do this.
Well, I want to do this, because I've said this to you personally, and I like to say it publicly, I will also thank you for many, many years of service to this community. I've only had the privilege of working with you in this capacity for four years, but I have found that, as Mayor McPhail has indicated, you're a tremendous resource, you're a great person, you represented the city well, people in the community know you, like you, you've always been fair and honest with everybody, and I have no doubts that when you go into this next chapter of your life, you're going to be equally successful. We're all going to be pulling for you, as much as I hate to see you leave, I'm happy to see you leave, because I do recognize that this next step in your career is extremely important to you, and I'm happy for you that you have received that opportunity, so best wishes, Pat.
Counselor Berman?
Just to add on, a couple of specific accomplishments that I've seen, most people know that I spent most of my life in Minnesota and Wisconsin, which are also snow-heavy states, but when I moved on to Margaret Circle, it was a very snow-heavy year, we had a ton of snow, and so when I woke up in the morning and saw that our road was already plowed, and I could get to work without difficulty, I was amazed by the magic they worked in Saco in making our streets clear and keeping them up, the services are top-notch. But I'd also like to point out the progress you've made in complete streets and bicycle-friendly roads in Pat's time here, our first bike lanes have been painted, we now routinely assess streets for making them more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, and these are innovations that Director Fox has brought to Saco, and I know many residents of Camp Ellis and the coast feel that Director Fox is the one thing between their house washing into the ocean and not, and the responsiveness of Public Works in protecting our shoreline has just been phenomenal, and is in the front of everybody's lips, so thank you for all of that work and all that progress you made.
Thank you. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going back a little further than 2019 to 2017, when I was very new to just campaigning, and this was the same time that we had a actual city campaign trying to secure funds for the new Public Works Department, and that's when we first, I was just, I was in a contested race, and you were pretty, the way you're able to present information is very effective, it helped me to better understand the needs of the city, the needs of the public works facility, why we needed to do what we did, and just the public initiative approach that you helped to direct was very helpful in my first year. Then when I started to learn about your asset, ten-year asset vehicle replacement plan, how you said, okay, instead of having these years where we have influx, there's a certain amount of things that I've learned from you, which I appreciate, I look to bring that forward in future opportunities up in Augusta, so I'll definitely reach out to you, and it is the loss of the city, you definitely had our support, I know that for a fact, I've already talked to you a little off, out of council, but yeah, it is our loss, however, someone's loss is someone's gain. So Ms. Kinley, Archer, she's two, she goes to Cape Elizabeth every Monday to hang out with Opah and Oma, so if you find some funds for the playground, I know Ms. Kinley would be much appreciated now that you're in that role, so I may reach out to you a little bit earlier than everybody else, but it will be done from that side. I do, even jokes aside, I do appreciate you, and it is a loss to the city of Saco, I recognize that, but thank you for your service, twenty years is a long time, almost long, no, twenty? Yeah, you did, yeah, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item number thirteen, that is the adjournment this evening, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman? Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at seven twenty-four, passes seven zero. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.